Good evening, we are going, oh, I need to have a motion to open up the public hearing.
So we'll second.
And before actually we get started, we have Sunny Daniels online. Um, so Sunny, I need to ask you, is it uh difficult for you to be here tonight and are you alone?
Very difficult to be there with you guys tonight and I am alone.
Thank you. Uh, so because she is online, it's also gonna be a roll call vote. So Sunny, to open up those public hearings.
Okay, Daniels, yes.
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 Who is her name?
Glover, yes.
Thank you very much. So there's two parts to the pub- two parts to the public hearing. Um, the first one is uh the taking the unfunded liabilities expendable trust fund. Uh, we do have a teacher who requested early retirement for some compelling reasons. We do have a memo in our uh packets. Is Amy, is there anything you want to speak to or do you want me just kind of go through it?
I think you're fine. Um, there was also a in the Trello, there was a breakdown of the expenses for the.
Yes. Um, so to be clear, it's a request that was brought to us in March uh with the recommendation to use the funds from the unfunded liabilities expendable trust fund um for retirement. And it is for, let me get the right amount, thirty-two thousand dollars, up to, up to, up to thirty-two thousand. Um, this would help fund the piece that when you look at the total balance, but the fund is fifty-six thousand eight hundred, we would love to taking up to thirty-two thousand. So, any questions? Any comments from the public? If anyone online, I don't, there wasn't before, but.
We have one person.
So if they.
No hand up.
No hand up. And so if they do want to uh speak at the public hearing, that this is no, this is just for the public hearing, not for the general meeting. Yes. Um, so if uh anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand, make sure your name is fully typed into. Okay, that's all right. The information is being added. But as there's no hand raised, we will go to the second part of the public hearing, which is about the phase two Skylight projects. Again, we have a memo in our in our packet. Pouring rankers. And now that distracted me, sorry. So we're looking at withdrawing funds from our maintenance expendable trust fund for phase two of the Skylights. Uh, the amount we would look at withdrawing is up to three hundred thousand dollars. And we do have the base project plan as well as our funding plan in the memo. So are there any questions about this project or with this withdrawal? The board, anyone from the public?
Just a comment?
Yes.
It's even underestimated?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's good news. Roger, I presume is the tip of that spear.
Right. So I guess one of those ones, I would add, or anyone listening later or coming back on these, this is exactly why we set up this fund. This was one of the expenses that we had originally planned on pulling from the fund and that we've been saving money for for this exact fund. So this is a I guess an anticipated and planned for of the use of this fund.
So, um if there is no other questions, we can close the public hearing and we can uh vote, we have to give at least thirty minutes for public comment.
If we don't close the public hearing.
Oh, we did. Oh, we have to leave it open just to open the regular meeting.
Alright, anybody walks in, we'll just let them interrupt.
People online wanna comment, they've got twenty-five minutes, so you can raise.
They can raise their hand. Alright, so we will come back and visit this in about thirty minutes. Thank you for that. Alright, in the meantime, we'll open the school board meeting for, so he can walk through the school board and ask for any public input. So if there are anyone in the room, be step forward, say your name and town of residence and you have a brief minutes.
Hi, I'm Tara Pompio, I live in Ankerst, and I, I think you guys all know how much I respect and admire you, and I just want to say I was really disappointed at the SAU meeting the other night after all the work that has gone into the surveys and everything about the later start time. I was really disappointed and surprised that like it didn't really get discussed. I know everybody got to speak their mind. Um, just voice their opinion, but I thought like a discussion was gonna happen. So I'm disappointed that after all the work that's sorted in a month of time, people like putting all that together. And Dana's recommendation that like we didn't put anything forward just to discuss. And yeah, I'm totally against the later start time, but I get like that people like it. So it's not that my uh, what I wish for didn't happen. It's just that like I feel like it got dropped and I'm really disappointed. And I think of like the AP kids who, they have lost five minutes per class for uh, well, today's a hundred and forty-two, the hundred and forty-second day of school, so seventy-one days or of classes times five minutes is like almost six hours of time. And they don't, like I know we're gonna add days on, but the days at the end of the year don't help them. And I don't want to bring up whatever the US News and World Report ranking was that I saw last week. But like we're going down and I don't think that's why necessarily. I just wish that we would have pushed a little bit to spend like, you know, you guys could talk about it tonight, like what we need to do here. What about a universe start time? Like I don't, I don't know how much it would cost. I know it costs a lot. Um, but the, the loss of instructional time is really kind of huge and I just want to say as much as I love and respect all of you and I hope you know that, that I just am really disappointed and I was very surprised. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Anyone?
No hands up.
No hands up.
Would you like to respond?
We don't respond in public inputs. No. So we can discuss the start time later.
Right, that I, I just, yeah, if I can't respond, I can say what I want to say about discussing it later, because it feels like you just kind of responded. That's kind of my point. I think it is something that should definitely be on the agenda and, and I think the anticipation is that it will be on the future.
Um, any other comments, anyone online? No one to hand up. Okay, so we will go on to update from community council.
Hi, um currently, community council has a rank by request proposal. This means that um if a student requests to know their class rank after this year's scholarship award night, the counselor may let the student know their class rank in the grade. The student would receive only their rank and no analysis. The ranking would use the weighted slash unweighted GPA that is used to calculate valedictorian and salutatorian. And currently that is our GPA. Um, this was brought forward based on curiosity and it would only be available after the senior awards night. So this would be after college commitments are already in place. This would be after scholarship applications are already in place. So Southhegans could still claim that we don't um rank our classes because it's not an official ranking. Um, many schools are moving towards um having no ranking. Um, I'm sorry.
Is that, is that true? That they're moving towards?
No, moving towards having no.
No ranking, yes, okay. Yeah.
And then we implemented Latin honors um to have more recognition than just valedictorian and salutatorian. Um, but yeah, this is what community council is currently working on. Um, for our next meeting, we will have our nominations for executive as well as for the discussion on this proposal. And um just today and yesterday, we finished up uh sorry, elections for the freshmen, sophomore and um current freshman, sophomore, and junior classes for community council grade reps for next year.
I believe a new moderator was already elected.
Yes, I'm a London.
Yes, which is great. Yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the, the Latin honors and how you anticipate?
Yeah, I had the same question.
How, how that's going to be done? Looks like, what's the cutoffs?
Uh, Latin honors was already.
I thought you were saying there was some change to that or you were doing something new with.
No, we are not doing anything.
Okay, alright.
Um, that was just something that was implemented for, for the recognition that.
I missed, I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought that, that changing that was getting wrapped into the.
Could you say it again? What's the, what's the proposal seeking to discuss or accomplish?
The proposal is purely uh purely based off of student curiosity. So if I were to go up to um my personal counselor, Meg, and say, hey, I would just like to know where was I ranked in the class at the end of the year? I know I didn't get valedictorian and I know I did get salutatorian, but I think I did okay. She says, okay, you ranked fifteen in the class. And out of a hundred and sixty-seven, that puts you in the first decile. So, congrats, you're in the top ten percent of your grade. Um, but it would be an unofficial uh ranking. And so Sebegan could still claim that we do not rank, uh telling colleges that we don't have a class ranking during applications.
Any other questions for Missy?
Are you hoping to be here next one as well?
Yes. Right, any other questions? Thank you very much. I appreciate the work that you do and community council. Appreciate that. Um, next thing our agenda is the presentation by Andrew Tyler. Please. Alright, and for those of you who don't know, this is Andrew Tyler, he's the new computer science teacher. And we're excited to hear all the changes you've been involved.
I'm so sorry, quickly.
Yes.
I would also like to invite you all to Sebegan's Jazz Night that will be on tomorrow. And final Jazz Night of the year. Um, and we have multiple schools visiting and like.
Yeah.
I would be there.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for having me. Um, my name's Andrew Tyler. Um, like it was, I'm the computer science teacher here at Sebegan. This is my first year here. Um, and I've spent a lot of time this year kind of getting settled. And while also thinking about the direction I'd like the computer science program to head and kind of assessing where we are with stuff and curriculum and just my thoughts on that. Um, just to do a quick intro to myself for slide two, perfect. Um, I taught computers uh programming to all grade levels uh my whole career. I've taught uh K through eight, K through twelve, um focusing mostly on like Python and Java. Those have been the main uh computer science programming languages I've worked in. Dabbled a little bit in like C++ C sharp and like others, but those are kind of the bread and butter of computer science programming's courses. I have also found a lot of joy working with like First Robotics and um the last couple districts I worked in uh didn't have robotics teams and I initiated them and uh they tended to be some of the most popular clubs and activities in the school, um sometimes racking rival ring. Right? Doing better than these sports teams for uh participation amounts and stuff. Um, we, I even had a middle school robotics team that was so large, we ended up having to have two implemented um just due to popularity. Um, other clubs that I've kind of started have been like D and D and even the student-run new show. Uh, I've enjoyed a lot of ways to have students um kind of explore and be curious about things while also uh expanding on their imagination as part of the process for that. Uh, this year I volunteered also with the high school robotics uh team and got to see a lot of like the ins and outs of how the team operates. I tried um to be as frequent a poster or share of team news with the social media accounts for the school while also helping to arrange and coordinate fundraising opportunities through the school as well for the team. Uh, I've learned a lot from just working with the robotics team as well. Um, in terms of like accomplishments and like kind of my background in um certification and uh training and stuff like that, that's the next slide. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's this slide. I've been very fortunate to have like so many opportunities in my career that um just kind of fell on my lap. Um, I am a New Hampshire certified computer science teacher. There aren't that many uh educators with that certification in the state. It's relatively new and so a lot of people are transitioning into that. Um, I have a masters of education in actually library media and tech integration. Um, my first initial plan was to work in the library, didn't have to really worry about uh necessarily program uh curriculum plans as much. I could help students with like a variety of things. Uh, and I didn't have to run a classroom twenty-four seven. Um, and then my first job ended up teaching K through eight and having my own classroom and just being in charge of that and I was terrified. Uh, but once I started teaching, I found every day getting to show students ways that they can accomplish things that they might seem challenging or may seem so out of reach. Uh, very rewarding and computer science does that very easily in a lot of ways. Um, somehow also during my first year teaching, I ended up speaking on education at a gaming convention in Boston at Taxis with two other uh colleagues. We were talking about uh applying gamification style to teaching in the classroom and kind of having um a way of like an award system and different ways to celebrate student uh achievement through game-like mechanics. Uh, and this convention is generally one for like celebrating board game creations or tabletop role-playing games or video games. And these three educators just started talking about teaching in front of all these people that are generally just uh game enthusiasts. Uh, and that was super exciting. Um, the next year teaching, I believe, I was also able to become a Lego teacher, Lego education teacher trainer, uh where uh my favorite thing to say is that I was once employed by Lego uh to teach teachers how to implement Lego in their curriculum as part of an education tool. And I could go to workshops and teach teachers how to do that. And then Lego would pay me to do that. Um, I never ended up doing that. Things kind of like didn't really work out schedule-wise and I wasn't able to lead a workshop um officially, but I did lead a workshop um as a favor to someone that knew I uh understood Lego education stuff. So I, I kind of did one, but it was for free, so I didn't really get a Lego check. Um, but it's fine. And finally, like one of the biggest things for me, uh that I'm pretty proud of is in twenty twenty-two, I was the finalist for New Hampshire Teacher of the Year. Um, that process was a big lift for me because I had to focus on kind of self-reflection and kind of bragging about myself a lot as part of that whole thing. Um, it was very humbling, but also very rewarding, uh just because of that process of having to acknowledge as many things as like I do or did as a educator and for students in the building um and the community. And I was super humbled to just be recognized for that and to get that far in that, in that process. Uh, I'm also super excited for my next stage of my career working here at Sebegan. Uh, I feel like I've been learning a lot of, of how I want to teach throughout the years and the values that I want to continue practicing, I feel has been warming me up to like this savor experience here. And um it's been a super fantastic year so far. Um, and I expect it to continue. Um, in terms of the curriculum that we have, the current year, we have a programming class that is a semester while also a year-long course. Um, and animation and game development uh course that is a semester or a year-long course. I'll explain like why it's like those two in a second. Uh, I am teaching the AP Computer Science Principles class as well as an advanced programming class that it can also be a semester or a year-long course. Um, if that sounds a little weird or confusing, that's part of like what we're kind of working towards uh for adjusting for next year. Um, the way that classes are kind of structured right now is um I have a programming class where some students are taking the first half of the course, the first semester version of the course. While at the same time, I have students taking the second semester of the course, kind of running parallel to each other in the same room, in the same block. Um, and while that works um generally on a level because the students on the semester two can also facilitate and help answer questions on the semester one that are beginning part of the curriculum. Um, for animation and game development, that course tends to have like two separate curriculum that don't always go hand in hand as well. Um, so part of the process through that has been um kind of readjusting the program of studies and the description for that. Uh, next year, the plan is to have a um, our programming class be semester only. But it's split in two. So programming A will be semester one and it will only be offered during semester one. So if anyone signs up for that, they know they're signing up for Python in Python programming language in semester A. Uh, if they sign up for programming B, they know that's in semester two and they, they know we're, we're learning Java in that. So there's no overlap and no confusion for what's kind of happening in the class or where we are. Um, the other plan is to have animation and game development be seen and um separated as two separate classes as well. Um, animation is also a prerequisite to game development, so there, there's still a um kind of order of operations for that, those two courses. Um, just to backtrack a little bit, programming A and programming B students have the option to just take one or the other or both. So now they're kind of standalone courses, um but can also be, they could just sign up for them back to back fairly easily. Um, the goal for that is just uh to kind of streamline student expectations with the work. Um, and just make sure that they feel as in control of like what they're learning and what they're choosing to learn as the process goes through. Um, also next year, AP CSA is offered, uh the AP courses alternate each year. AP CSA is essentially AP Java. And advanced programming is still offered. We are switching it to be a year-long choice. Um, and AP advanced programming, sorry, will run during the programming classes like it normally does now too. Um, and generally the advanced programming students get to follow like their own curriculum at their own pace uh with general check-ins from me, but they also become teacher assistants in the classroom and helpers for like the other students while that's happening. So overall, that's the plan for the changes. Um, ideas and like future thoughts that I've had after working here for the year is um tweaking the AP uh computer science curriculum for the AP CSA, the AP Java and the AP computer science principles. And all I mean for that is uh just switching what the curriculum is that we follow. A lot of the AP courses for computer science, you have multiple platforms to choose from like code.org or code HS. Um, I've had great success for the, the Java course to be run through a company called Roomstone where all the work is web-based and they get little assignments that are in these little boxes that they complete their code to auto-checks for them and it'll give them feedback right away. Uh, and for Java, that's really helpful just because there's a lot of syntax and symbols throw off students like so easily and if they have to wait for like just that little check, though, there's a little bit of time loss with that. Um, the other option, hope is exploring after uh this next year, kind of assessing student interest and enrollment and the impact of student interest on the animation and game development courses and possibly offering like a animation two or a game development two for like this next tier of that study if students are interested in further exploring that. Um, as of right now, like the animation courses, uh strictly 2D animation and students are interested in 3D, maybe that's what animation two could up, give them an avenue towards. Um, the other hope is that uh down the line, I thought, I think it would be great to try and uh explore a possibility of operating a computer hardware slash digital devices course where students can learn the process of building and maintaining devices like a computer or network server. Um, a lot of that can be done with small uh smaller devices like Raspberry Pis, so you don't have to have like a whole desktop or anything. And they're generally like a thirty-dollar device that you can add on these things instead of like suddenly having to have all these extra computer towers and things kicking around. Um, and those can even do networking and things. There's a lot of uh variety for those. Um, and uh future plans, uh probably starting pretty soon near the beginning of next year, maybe even just putting out feel, feelers right at the end is uh working to coordinate, reach out to the middle school computer science teacher at AMS, uh who I believe is also new this year. Um, our goal uh has been mostly to kind of focus and understand and get settled on um the buildings we're working in, but I'd love to kind of collaborate with him and just kind of make sure that I know what to expect from students coming in from AMS and then we can kind of tweak and transition that. He also knows what I'm kind of working on and we can find ways to coordinate between the two buildings as well. Um. And uh just to add on to that, uh I had the opportunity to kind of visit and collaborate with Charlie Swift's Swift's Advanced Engineering Course, uh where they're programming Arduino's and kind of working with the students with the programming and just interacting with them. Um, and I'm hoping to do like little classroom like tie-ins and see if there's other opportunities like that within the building too.
Happy, that's a lot. Great. Um, anyone have any questions or comments?
One, I love your enthusiasm. I just want to say that, no, it's, it's contagious and I think it's an important, I think it's actually, I think it's just great. Like I love that you actually started talking about at the beginning with some of the extracurriculars and the volunteer things in the clubs because you know, we, we, we talked the other night about how, you know, club, club, clubs seem to be declining and they're, you know, we want to make sure they're rich and we want to make sure they're energized and we want to make sure the kids are engaging and, and involved. And it's clear that you are fostering and encouraging that and I really appreciate that. This is all really interesting too. And I, I really like the um, the kind of thoughtful approach to separate, separating it out by semester because yeah. If you get the second semester kids helping the first semester kids, I mean, it's true, it works. But it's probably not as full of experience for those second semester kids as you'll be able to give them with the new schedules and.
For sure, that was a concern.
Yeah.
Do, like having attention divided maybe a little too much.
Yeah.
Or not, um, being able to do it in a timely manner, always answer like where someone might be stuck. Because I'm teaching a new thing for the other group. You might just have to pause, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But thank you, thank you very much for coming and showing it. And again, I just, I love your enthusiasm.
Welcome. Anyone else?
Um, yeah. Hi, um, I thought that was really impressive. Um, I'd like to hear just a little bit more about how you'd implement gamification into your teaching style. I think that's really cool.
Um, so it can be like a really big, like very purposeful change or it could be like little things too. Um, sometimes it could just be, um, instead of just outright saying, this is the classwork we have to do today. This is um your homework, um even just changing like the wording of those uh in as like kind of quirky as it might sound, but saying our quest for the day today or your challenge for the day or here's, um, if you finish your work, you can tackle these exercise classes instead of um extra work on top of that. Sometimes the word change, especially for students who are used to like game mechanics and video games and stuff. Um, it's just that language shift can um sometimes change their buy-in for what they're working on. Um, it could be larger things. There's been systems that do um kind of reward-based things where you can earn points that go towards tokens, that could be class currency almost. And they could be little things where you could turn in um stuff to uh be able to be uh the class leader for the day or something as simple as um you like in elementary school, uh one of the things was, um, you get to always be in the line leader for a week and you could turn in two hundred points or tokens for what you earned from classwork during the day. Um, usually they are rewards that do not affect the um running of the classroom or anything, but usually they sometimes uh also add to it, incidentally.
Very cool. I hope you will call the final test, like a final test a world boss or something. Very cool. I hope you will call the final test, like a final test to world boss or something. Yeah, I thought it was really cool. Thank you.
I'm gonna share your enthusiasm, very contagious. I'm sure the kids pick up. Students, I was corrected the other day. Uh, to uh, to to, just one more, I'm sorry. Yep, now versus perfect. It needs to, on there, like, I understand the animation game development. Can you talk about sort of like the next five years? Because when I take a look at advanced programming in the AP CSA, like. A student coming into this program, this could be completely life-changing, life-altering, because. This is the future of the game economy and all these things, fintech and all that's right. So the collaboration and the benefits of demonstrating that to students when they're enrolled. And what does that look like from a career path standpoint, for one? Then number two, what type of. Relationships we're building with local businesses, whether it be P A E or fidelity or uh even United Healthcare. Like all of those components collaborating with them to bring them into the classroom. And then last, the the third piece is like, you know, our consumer math, right? Bringing that stuff in because. These guys leave these programs, their comp structures are enormous. And they're thrown into a world where dollars are being tossed their way, uh, stock options, so forth and so on, like. Incorporating that into the programming sort of conversation and say, yeah, this is great for learning how to do this, but. There's also another side to this that we need to sort of prepare you for as as you leave uh the high school environment.
Yeah, that all that sounds super fun. The first one, uh, just to kind of make sure, the first question was, uh, maybe. I believe about like students kind of collaborating, working together on maybe a similar project, because that's kind of real world. Application. Yeah, that just kind of made me think of. A possible assignment could be that they can only big program chunks of a bigger thing and then they have to bring it all together. And somehow manage that, uh, because that's a typical programming environment. Where uh. And it also ties into how I I sharp all the time on. Your programs need comments. Can you explain what your thinking is? Not for me. Yes, for me, but also because in the real world. You're never working on the whole program yourself. You're doing a small part. And that person that you share your code with needs to know what your code does so they can use it for their part. Um, and their comments need to kind of do that. That'd be kind of an interesting pro- project to try and do. Smaller parts to connect and build upon. Sounds, this sounds super fun.
Yes, like the the part here, like, are these things like in the cards? Because curriculum structure. We incorporate a lot of those dynamics into it to make sure that when a student signs up as a freshman, they know from a math standpoint. Let's go ahead and push into this and.
You know where my mind goes immediately. Empty. Uh, so yet like, yes, absolutely. Um, I think I think this is one, this is like one step. Now that Andrew's here and we've been able to kind of uh go back and look at some longitudinal data about enrollment and what kids have needed and where kids are going. Uh, I think this is step one. The other piece that we're doing a lot at school, not just with computer science, but also in business, for example. These program reviews where we're seeing like, so where are there some natural affinities in overclass, right? So business, working with econ, which is a social studies class. Working with personal finance, working with math. Or like the consumer algebra class that we have. So that definitely is right in line with the work that we're doing. Uh, I think in terms of relationships with outside organizations. There's a lot of. We have a lot of desire on our staff to kind of bring that, I don't say back, so I don't know how big it ever was, but. But incorporate it more. Uh, we're seeing it a lot in engineering classes where kids, we're we're having kind of outside experts come in. Talk about what it means to be an engineer, civil engineering and things like that. Kind of trying to have a renaissance with ELOs and, you know. Organizations are just now letting kids back in after COVID and like reestablishing some of that. But we do have, as we're reminded frequently, like a community rich with these things. That our students can benefit from. So absolutely.
Yeah, so before I toss it back, I mean, this program that that you're designing, which is awesome. Um, has the potential to be a differentiator, so the other school would offer X, right? So to really go out and blow it out and bring in like a CTE equivalent from whatever other schools to say, hey. If you want to go down this path and have a really successful career in 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 this field, so he gets the place to do it. It's cool that you're in charge.
And I want to jump off of that too, because uh, you know, kids who want to go to computers, want to go on game design, want to go into animation. That idea of the animation two and game of that, I mean, because they have to produce a portfolio a lot of times to apply to these schools. So that they can see, hey, I can do the program, I can do program, I can do that. Oh, I can do the, oh, I can produce the portfolios. We're preparing them for that next step and tying it into the rest. And it's a great idea. Yeah, and and the other piece that guests may say is is um. Thoughts of, you know, summer schooling ideas and make summer camp for coding. I mean, how to bring that in as a. An adult revenue stream potential, but maybe something that is a camp that we provide to students. Might be something for us to explore, throwing it out there. Anyone else?
I just want to say his enthusiasm that he expresses here is absolutely amplified in the classroom. He, Andrew, I I would like to say that we know each other well. And that we like each other. But obviously, I have personally never taken one of his classes, but I absolutely feel that teacher-student dynamic with him. Especially with the First Robotics. As uh, some of you may know, I uh have been on First Robotics. Our team uh for four years now and I have been the captain for two of them. And Andrew has really revitalized the uh. An idea of being in that kind of program. So I am even just talking to other students who are in his classes, there's a ton of engagement and a ton of enthusiasm. For these programs and I'm really excited to see where it goes in the future. But, yeah.
Right?
Thanks, Sydney.
Yeah. Glad to hear that there's engagement. Why wouldn't you be interested in this? In the big ugly. Future will is how AI could interrupt. Future of these jobs and all of this, these careers. And I can imagine at some point. You're gonna, you're always gonna need a person who has this expert knowledge in order to actually test anything, but that not, that may be ten people, not a hundred. So, guess, is there? Um, how do you think about integrating the future with an AI world? To A, make sure the academic integrity is maintained in your class, number one, and then number two, how to. How to teach students how to leverage that world in a productive way that's beneficial for their futures.
Um, so uh. We kind of have had slightly informal slash formal discussions usually at the beginning of the uh. Course about um AI and the different tools and stuff and how. Easily accessible they are. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we're using them the right way or should use them in certain circumstances or not. But we've, um, there's been times where like we've. Completely hit a wall with programming. I've been trying to debug it with them and like we can't find it and. And my process has been, we've gone through all these steps to like go through and try and find it ourselves. We've asked each other, we've asked people in the classroom. We've asked me, like, we've exhausted pretty much all our opportunities. This is a great time to ask like an outside source for stuff. We want to try and keep like a lot of questions internal as much as we can, so like it's our own learning. But now that we've kind of exhausted like all, we know all these things that don't work. We still haven't found what's right. This might help us figure out what's right and then we work to understand why it's like working that way. So if we get an answer from like, plug it in our code to chat GPT and saying, hey, can you fix this? And they can. If, what, when we get the answer back, we want to make sure that we understand kind of what it's doing. Sometimes chat GPT will give us a much more advanced version of the program than we are even learning. So I I have talked to them about, you turn in, if you submit something like that, that's a kind of a red flag because it's. Above and beyond what we've learned and generally not what we've produced in the past. So if we get that, then our next step might be, let's break that down so we can understand how to translate that into what we're doing and get the internal structure. And to kind of focus on not necessarily that output from something like chat GPT as a immediate. Solution, but the next step to learn from that solution and like. Make sure that we have further understanding. So next time that problem comes up, because of Will, because programming always has like little minutia. Things that uh throw us off. We don't have to go that route. We've learned it and we can do it ourselves from there. And that's. A little bit of a learning curve to like get to that point and not just jump to it. And kind of be. Okay with that. Yeah. But generally, we're trying to like be a little stubborn and not like resort to like the easy answer and like stick with the problem solving. Um, my favorite thing uh with students is uh I will purposely celebrate that they're stuck. Every time. They'll call me over. I don't know what's going on. Great, let's figure it out. And they're they're like. Part of that is to just kind of. Show that it doesn't mean that they're failing or anything like that. It just, we're stuck, we haven't figured it out. That's the. Process of the problem solvers and the important part of it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is our life.
That I personally seen, we had a conversation about this because I was messing with some rubber ducks that he has on his desk. Something uh, a method that he has with his students is if they're stuck on a problem, he'll have them talk to the. And usually what happens is talking out those problems out loud helps them solve. And think of what they need to do next. And so it's not only celebrating the fact that they're stuck. And the fact that they have found themselves a challenge, but it's also finding those ways to navigate through those challenges and developing those real world skills.
I was able to bring Zach's rubber duck and advisory.
Just one other thing. You don't want, yeah, just. I took this anecdote to share and I I'm concerned. I want to make sure that our Computer Science Program is at the front edge of the future. So the anecdotes I want to share is, my brother is a Android developer. Been laid off for the last ten months. Just got a job. So those are a little stressful. He was making gangbusters for a long time and then. Bang. So that industry is adjusting itself in real time. And my cousin is an animator, Sony. And um, he's still employed, but a lot of his colleagues are not. And there's a lot of overseas um outsourcing for that work. And it is, it is also adjusting to a new reality, so I would. Kind of, kind of to Stephen's point about. Making it relevant for the future, that's. You know, how do you obtain the skills and then actually have a career? Now, if that's what you choose. I don't know the answer, but I know that concern is out there and there are some real world examples that. People who've long into their career, all of a sudden going, can't even work in this industry. So that, those questions are being raised as we speak.
Yeah, those could, those could be concerning, um, especially with the uh kind of fluidity of, fluidity of the. Different positions and stuff um in the computer science industry. Uh, especially for, I think, the creative side, like the video game creation or the animation. Because you finish a project, maybe you're not necessarily in line to. Jump into the next one or consider for the next one. Maybe your skill set doesn't line up for like what the next project is and you might have to. Be able to. Uh, figure out how a way to pivot or. Have a skill set just to um have a multitude of skill sets with stuff. Um, a lot of programming, even just uh Python or Java or animation skills. The foundation for them translates pretty well to if you need to quickly learn like. Uh, C plus plus or C sharp on the fly. The basic rules, because they're grounded in logic, tend to be the same. It's just what's ends up being different is kind of like the language that you're using and the syntax and the structure. And part of that is in line with why Python and Java are like the two introductory courses. And the two programming languages that I focused on. One, they're the two. Pretty much most popular programming languages out there in terms of being used. Python is very heavily used with like. AI and stuff, because Python's great at um analyzing data and producing stuff from data. Uh, Java is really good for um having more control over different segments, segments of your code and recreating it and. It's a bigger powerhouse for. Larger performance. Acts from a computer or device, um, but they also have. In their root structure, those two programming languages can be helpful to. Almost help you read other programming languages and what's going on in them, maybe not understand like the structure and how to set it up all the time. But if uh someone who's pretty good at Java looks at C sharp. You can almost translate like pretty easily what's going on. Um, and having those foundations can help you have a skill set to possibly jump into a new program. And be ready to pivot to something new in case like a job changes or something. You can. Hopefully, you might have to train and put some time into that, but that might help be a little less scary with. Not having to know all the programming languages, but being able to jump to one if you want.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, good. But again, also my, my daughter is a third year at Stony Brook. For marine science and she uses her Python program.
Yeah. Yeah. So easy to.
It's used in many, in many. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming and presenting your thoughts, ideas, classes and. Look forward to seeing you again.
Excited about the future.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you very much. I have have a motion and a second for closing the public hearing. All right, we'll have to do a roll call vote, so you online, Sunny. Friend, yes.
Glover, yes. Hey, yes.
Um, so we can now vote on the public hearing. Mr. Vayu, I know you weren't here for it, but all the information is in the packet, so if you're comfortable voting. Feel free. So there, there's two motions. One, the first one is uh to approve the disbursement of the thirty two thousand from the Sohagen Cooperative. To, up to, did I not say up to? Sorry. To approve the disbursement of up to thirty two thousand dollars from the Sohagen Cooperative School District Unfunded Live Buildings Retirement Expendable Trust. Fund for a requested early retirement. The move second. Second by Anna. Um, I don't believe there would be any other discussion, so we'll do a roll call vote, Sunny.
Daniels, yes.
If yes.
Friend, yes.
Glover, yes. Hey, yes.
I thank you very much. That one passes. And the second motion is to approve up to three hundred thousand dollars for phase two of the SHS Skylight Replacement Project. To be expended from the Sohagen Cooperative School District Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund.
So moved.
There's the second and um, not sure to be any other discussion, so we'll go to the roll call vote, Sunny.
Daniels, yes.
Friend, yes.
Glover, yes. AU, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, so going out there, consent agenda, there is untest, unanticipated revenue five hundred dollars from. Health Trust for Wellness Program and there's also board meeting minutes. Are there any comments or questions?
I have one on the minutes.
Yes.
Line four fifteen. It's the line four eighteen, I'm sorry, four eighteen and four nineteen. Since Mr. Glover suggested they should considering enable candidate statements in the voter guide, that is true. Next sentence says, he would persuade all governing bodies to do the same, not exactly true. But as the clarification I would like is that I said it would be fine if other governing bodies would. Join us in that endeavor, but that we should not wait them to decide.
Right. Do you have some wording you prefer? If they can do it today or today, are you comfortable trying to reword that? Right. Do you have some wording you prefer? If they can do today or today, are you comfortable trying to reword that?
Send you a that spirit. You want after the meeting.
Did you just change persuade to encourage? Encourage others to do so also?
I am happy to let them know, get them on notice that that is something that we decided. But it's like an affirmative task. Which mean if that's where it goes to to reach out to to whoever governs bodies. Form them what I'm doing and answer questions, I'd be happy to probably do that.
I meant it more like just uh in the statement, certainly encourage others to consider doing the same, not that anyone's doing it.
I would, but
What's easiest way to amend the
Well, I would, what I really would like is to add that, but we shouldn't wait to order to be universal and ready before we need by example. That's the point that I think is missing. Primary state statement in the sense.
So can I make a suggestion? Can you go back, listen to the minute? I just wanna make sure that what's recorded is actually consistent with what was said and that may have been exactly what was said. I just don't have the direction. I mean, if you go back, find that part and then amend it so it matches with
I I do wanna say that we're doing this more and more and more in these meetings. And the minutes are not supposed to be transcriptions. It's supposed to be the spirit of the conversation. It's unfair to deny to constantly do this every single meeting. I understand what you're looking to do, but if you're gonna come tonight and ask that we throw this out or modify the language, just come with what you wanted to write or to say, present that to the the six of us and we'll vote to adopt it. So tonight now, we need to pull this, not vote on it. Today now needs to worry about this for next month. You bring your notes back to the next meeting, then we're gonna either vote to adopt it or not. I really wanna get away from doing this. We did it the SAU meeting, we've done it multiple meetings here. It's unfair to her. It's unfair to everybody else. If you have an objection to the minutes, submit it to the chair in advance. They can circulate it to all of us and then we can adopt it. Speed this along. Just my
Agreed. Um, so I'm gonna ask as much about if you can just come up with some wording and next time we'll we'll um we'll we'll look at that. Maybe we can get to Dana ahead of time. We'll get to her ahead of time so we can put it into the minutes of the Thank you. Um, but we do need to vote on the unanticipated revenue of five hundred dollars. So can I have a motion for that? Second by Miss Blaismerman and do a roll call vote on that too. Sunny.
Daniels, yes.
Okefias.
Friend, yes.
Glover, yes. A yes.
Okay, thank you.
There was a recommended motion specifically or purpose, we we need to make that motion other than just
So motion to accept and spend the amount of five hundred dollars.
Is that is that a condition on the
Consent agenda, right?
Yeah, you're fine.
Yes, so that's part of the consent agenda. Yeah, it became the only item, I guess, which is why it's a little weird. But if it's a part of the consent agenda, it's as part of the Thank you for checking.
It's all specific motion.
Um, principals report. Dana, is there anything you would like to highlight?
Um, I don't think so. Let me answer any questions.
Okay, I have a couple. So one, a couple of comments. One, so I see the PPSA is getting rejuvenated. Thank you very much to Victoria, Pristine Grayson for stepping up on that. There was
And for others for caring.
And for others for caring. Absolutely.
I appreciate those two stepping up.
You gave the shout out. I I appreciated the analysis on where how you got where you were on the junior learning project, the JLPs. Um, fact that there was committee and the fact that there was a lot of input taken. So I won't guess that. I'm glad to see that that was carefully reviewed and undertaken.
I'm gonna discuss that.
rejected. Um, it does, you know, it it is different, but I, as I said, I appreciate the the detail with which you laid out how we got where we are now. It sounds like there might be some discussion on that, but I appreciate that detail. And then there was one other thing. Oh, the summer work projects. I'm fascinated by this. Um, I think it's they sound fun. Um, but how does it work? Because I guess part of what I was confused by was the in the intro, all teachers have the opportunity to volunteer for uh state schoolwide peer approved projects. And then the we look at these proposals based on funding. So if we look at the not like are the are the school wide peer approved volunteer times for people that are working on that over the summer? Or is there a stipend for that? Okay, the volunteer was what the volunteer and then the reference to budgets were the two things that that conflicted with me there. Um.
I'll be to clarify. So none of them are volunteer. They're all paid.
Okay.
Um, I think uh what what probably would have been better wording is to say for the school wide peer approved project, we put out an all call for people who would like to be involved
Okay.
in in the in the in that work. And then the additional proposals is, you know, once we've focused on things that we know align to our priorities. Um, then we solicit specific proposals from teachers. Um, and uh so so that anybody can also submit like this, you know, uh this is something that I think we need to work on over the summer and here's what the outcomes are gonna be and here's why it's important and here's what the costs are gonna be. Um, so just so that there's a kind of different levels of of work happening.
So those are, those are projects as a follow up then that are, they're looking at, these are things that I think would be useful. I don't think I've had a raise this, but for the school, for the school community, this is something that we we maybe I could help get ready so we could implement next year or look at the future or we benefit the greater community.
Right, right.
Separate from the like the individual learning projects that we talked about in the past.
Right.
Obviously benefit the school indirectly also. I'm not meaning to imply otherwise, but that that's the type of project.
You mean the the that the teachers can propose?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's a history of teachers um doing work over the summer to prepare if they're taking on a new prep or if they're gonna be co-teaching with a new partner, um so that they're getting all of the curriculum ready um to kinda hit the ground running.
Okay.
Um, though not everybody feels like they need that. So if that's something that teachers are really interested in, that's something that we allow them to make. So that's, that's um, that's some of it. Uh, you know, in the past um, there's been a proposal around uh nine grade teams and kind of uh, you know, uh, what are we doing maybe two years ago? What are we doing to ensure an equitable experience regardless of what tier your kid gets placed on? Whether it be nine A or nine B. So that was the summer work project. Um, that was proposed by staff member. Um, this summer, I think we'll look, uh, I think the ninth grade humanities, uh, social studies teachers. This is to a point that I think Christie had made before are wanna take a deeper look at kind of the New Hampshire state requirements that um that are supposed to be embedded in the curriculum and make sure that that that's being covered in in um not that that's being taught in a way that is um kind of um engaging to kids and also fidelity to the expectations. So it kind of runs the movement.
Thank you. I appreciate the Mr. Babe?
Looking at the the JLP. Saw that it was gonna be a change in the graduation requirements. I thought we changed graduation requirements in September, so I went back to the notes of the packet that we got back then. And I looked through, we got the matrix of requirements that were subject to change. And then on the other side were the changes that were gonna be made. And I didn't see the JLP in it. So I don't think that I don't think that the J JLP can be removed as a graduation requirement without our approval. Um, and I think that if we did not specifically approve its removal from the still there, it cannot be removed without our consent. I'm also a little concerned about the process of the changes to the JLP. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, a coalition of students, administrators and teachers got together and came up, it was at that time it was called the Junior Research Project and they developed it into a new thing called the changed the code, the requirements and the formatting. And it was actually written up in New Hampshire Learning Initiative. That's a model of how things are done in Sohagen and that's a model for schools. And I'm concerned that we weren't involved at school. That we weren't really informed upfront and made a part of the graduation requirement process. Getting, I'm even more concerned that this is coming up now. That's another iteration of without us even knowing that it was coming. And I I'm concerned that program that was developed closely with students did not involve students in the same kind of way it did. And why we're moving away from that? Were students involved uh directly? Did they have a vote on the committee? Was it presented to the uh community council? What was the process and what are your expectations from us? Because I'm I'm definitely not ready to vote on this tonight. That stands.
Sure. Um, so this is something that I think started um the summer after my first year at Sohagen. Um there was overwhelming negative feedback around the JLP um from students and staff. Um, I think I captured some of what the feedback was, some of the challenges. Um, and so that summer or the year after, um if I misquote the dates, it's not intentional. Um the teachers started to do some work to update the expectations. Um, and what the sticking point really was uh at the time was that the project itself is a good, is it is a good idea. And when you read about the changes, the fundamental changes, um they're not, they're not uh substantial. Um, in terms of what we're asking kids to do, in terms of what the skill, the outcome, the skills that we wanted kids to work on. Um, but what it did do was allow this assignment to be more authentically embedded into the experience that kids were having in um in World Lit and World Studies. Um, and allow them to use some of the background knowledge that they were gaining in the course to to do better research, to write a better paper. Um, cause, cause kind of the free for all topic. While nice, right? We talk about choice and voice. The kids don't have the the background skills in order to do that. Um, I understand that, you know, I'm I'm saying all of this to to basically to reaffirm that like what what the kids are doing now could arguably be considered more work than they were doing, right? They were writing one paper, now they're writing two papers. Um, it's still a required piece of the class. Every kid that takes World Lit World Studies does it. So I'm saying all of this. I realize I'm not addressing your point, which is kind of the procedural piece. Um, I don't really have, um, I don't really have a like a defense for that, other than to say, I think when we took this on several years ago, it was um really well intentioned to move expeditiously because of all of the problems that we were having. Um, and so uh and so absolutely, I apologize for that oversight. And again, I know it doesn't uh, you know, talking about it doesn't fix that that piece of it. This is absolutely something I still stand behind and I think our teachers will still stand behind. Um, when you talk about were kids involved in the change um directly in terms of the same work, same level of work that we did on the graduation committee, um, no, I think because the changes that we made were not super substantial in that, you know, changing a lot of the foundational things as, you know, I wrote about in the um in the update, like what are we still asking kids to do? Um, and because we're moving ahead in feedback that we're getting, that this is, this feels really disjointed. I feel like I don't, you know, I don't know what I'm working on. Um, you know, the other piece that's not in here that's really tricky is by having it be a standalone requirement. What we're saying is any kid that transfers into Sohagen that hasn't taken World Lit World Studies is now gonna take World Lit World Studies just so that they can do the JLP. Even if they've already taken World Lit World Studies somewhere else and have that credit, they haven't done the JLP. And so that that feels like really unfortunate for them. Um, coming in late to have to do that. Of course, there's other ways to do that and we do try to mitigate that because that's a big commitment. But that was another piece of like, look, we're still, this is still gonna be foundational for the Sohagen experience. Um, but let's not double dip with kids where we're putting it on the senior checklist essentially, and we're embedding it in this class, so it's counting twice. Let's just embed it in the classroom. Um, so that's, and and you know, a lot of work continues to be done to support kids around um this work. I was meeting with the teacher today whose class I'm observing on Tuesday. Um, and we're talking about, you know, the department wide work that is going on uh in social studies that kind of happened as the next step after these iterations of how do we work on students' research skills? Because we're seeing that that's a gap when they're doing their JLP. And so there's a lot of good work going on. And again, I know that none of that gets to the procedural point that you're talking to. I just want to reassure you that I do not think that we water down the experience for kids or change it fundamentally. Now, and if we say like, it's gonna remain a graduation requirement, we're gonna have some follow up to do with kids this year. Um, but every kid has done it by the end of this junior year. So so I guess that's
So one case I just wanna add, and this is one of the things I know I've brought up and and where my big concern is it, did anyone survey or talk to kids who've already graduated? No. So the only reason, alright, so the only, the only reason I'm bringing up is because I I don't know, I know all of us have kids who have already graduated, but they go there in their freshman year of college and I think they're all writing a sixty page paper.
They're writing a sixty page paper now, still.
They're not writing a three page paper.
No, they're writing a six page paper. They're writing a six
Three page paper.
They're writing a six page paper. They're like, I I I don't know, I don't know exactly.
Says write two separate research papers. I understood that I've been told it was only three
Yeah.
Pages. That's why I get my concern. So if it's not, if it's truly, it makes me feel better. No, we're doing that because I, that's one of the things I can say multiple, my daughter, my multiple friends have all said, that prepared me. Which I walked in and I, when they said I had to write this, I was like, this is awesome. And I was afraid that we were backing down on that preparation skill. That
We're absolutely not. So at the bottom, again, I I'm, I don't know if I
Probably six.
Nets, but like at the bottom of the paper that, at the bottom of the page where it has the cable.
Yeah.
Um, students have multiple checkpoints mapped out, et cetera, et cetera, to draft a final approximately six page paper. Um, so that is
Grab the only cues they still
That, I mean, that was one of my favorite.
Right. If for me, it was the experience of being able to expand. So I don't mind that it's embedded. Um, I just wanna make sure we have that experience because there's
I, it's huge. Me too, me, uh, me too, and the teachers as well. And I think that's that, you know, when you see that, you know, further down, and we're talking about anytime that we're talking about expectations for kids, they need to be appropriate. They need to be rigorous. They need to be relevant. They need to be meaningful. We completely agree. I know part of not the only piece for the honors component to the JLP, but one of the pieces of the component is a locker. Yeah. Um, again, not the only piece, because length doesn't equal rigor, but it, but it does get to what you're saying. Um, so that is the expectation and then doing it in English and doing it in
That's okay. So I I do have to breathe, breathe Dan. I, I was a little caught off guard when I read this and um, as now of second generation Um, in the past, how have we addressed those changes to our graduation requirements? Have you filtered them through all the various stakeholders in the, in in the school? Have we gone through students, gone through faculty in a forum, the board? Filtered it out there saying this is what we're thinking and then take a step back and then go ahead and present the final product. Has that been the approach in the past?
So that the history and for me, when I arrived, they hadn't altered the graduation requirements in over a decade when I arrived in two thousand twenty. So it's not a common thing to do with Sohagen. And then for me, that's what made Sohagen our cake. Okay, we weren't evolving. You know, we weren't keeping up. Our con, our transcripts weren't as competitive, but we did have some of these these, these things like Division One JLP advisory, senior project that made us meet. And so, but as far as peer graduation requirement changes, they hadn't really happened. The first time we went through it was with the graduation requirements that you guys saw this fall with this process. So I couldn't speak to the process that was used prior to to my arrival and and there were a number of people who uh were here when they used to do it and they used to go through a similar process that they went through with this one, where they went through students, staff, um, community council, you know, and and that's how we went about graduation requirements. Uh, this one time, but it was similar to how they used to do it, you know, when they did alter some graduation requirements. Like you say, in the early two thousands. You know, when they did alter some graduation requirements, like you say, in the early two thousands, two thousand five, eight, like that range. When there were some amendments, so that's how I remember it, you know, but that's, we're talking. Twelve, fifteen years ago, you know what I mean? Like from when I arrived in two thousand twenty, so.
So I I also wanna, again, uh, I also want to reiterate. I think uh me personally, the admin here, like appreciate and value absolutely the oversight that the board. Um, provides, and this. This work was completed prior to this year, right? So what you saw presented. Around the graduation requirement work at the beginning of the year, um, this work was done previously to that, and so this was. This was really, I put this in here as response to the concern that you had about like, we're not doing enough to prepare the kids. Um, so uh, there was, I think the feeling at the time, again, not this year, but. A year ago, two years ago, when when we started the work was. Um, was to make the change that we saw was going to be in the best interest of kids, and also it felt like I I don't, I don't know. What the lapse would have been, like, just to Mike's point, like, before we engaged in the. Um, graduation requirement work, it hadn't been done, uh. I think the, I I think maybe operating under the assumption of like, it's not going away, kids are still doing it. So like fundamentally, the requirements haven't changed, because if you take this class, you do this thing. Um, it was just removing it from the checklist. Um, so. World Studies is still required, part of the graduation requirements, and JLP is a requirement of that. So in that way. It's not a fundamental change, though I completely understand what you're saying, removed from that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I understand like in previous, the before it was changed embedding in the class, it was very disjointed because. My, my older said that, it's like, the kid picked a topic. They worked with somebody, but then the grading system, the grading of it went through other and other staff members. Who had an input on it and had nothing to do with the person who looked at it, who wrote it with the student. And it wasn't related to a class, so I understand completely disjointed, so I I don't mind it, but I think it was surprising for. A lot of listeners. So, so we gotta figure out how to appropriately address this.
So I I've got two follow-up questions, but the answer is him before I go.
And John hasn't spoken yet.
Since we're talking about JLP. I piece them too. What I wanted to say, I I'm. I've had, sir, shouldn't be surprised. But it's not that, it's not with the output of what you wrote. I couldn't, I couldn't sit here and say I would disagree with you. You may be a sound case. The the process is, I I want to say this in the most inspirational and forward-looking and positive way possible. This to me is yet another example of where we are, our baseline, how we interact with each other, board members and administration. What I'd like to see us go to. Is a place where you're thinking, you see, you're on the ground, we're not. You're seeing this need, there's the the. The overwhelming negative feedback in your first year here, okay, that's legit. What I'd like you to to view as a system, administrative system, it's not about making persons, it's about the. Our relationship, the oversight versus the implementation, it would be to raise that to us, say, we're looking at, here's our preliminary idea. What do you guys think? Do you have any preliminary feedback? Well, here's round two. We've we've talked to the teachers now, and oh, and come on, we could be a part of the. Of the solution development. And and then when this comes here, we can, we can all cheerlead it. We all had a, an opportunity to be a part of the development, whether any individual board member grabs that opportunity is, is an individual board member's choice. It's the lack of the opportunity to contribute that is, for me, has been frustrating, and this is not you. This is the way it was when I first started paying attention in twenty fifteen. I I I talked to some OGs in town, you you used to be like that from what I understand, back in the first twenty years, it's sort of been like that in the last. Fifteen or something, or or whatever. And I'd like to be able to participate. Some of this, and know what's going on and be able to be part of the solution-making process, and not just always kind of be rocked on my heels in these meetings, and it's like, oh, my gosh, it's like. Structural changes are making, being made, and we're just like, oh, my gosh, in five minutes, they're trying to figure out if that makes sense. That's where I'm coming from. I would hope that we can just choose to. Share our information with each other fully enough, so we can come up with the best solutions we possibly can. In a, in a, in a reasonable amount of time with the limited resources available to. That's my inspirational message in response to your comments.
Okay. Um, you have to do.
If Dan, did you want to?
Yeah. I just, I'm, I'm looking at all of those stuff that comes at us. Usually we get no, we get maybe a meetings notice that, hey, next, next meeting we'll be talking. Sure. And we find out this has been in the works for two years. In my experience, you know, in accounting or or whatever, you you get assigned a project. And you said, they say, it's due in six months or three months. In two or three weeks, we're gonna get together and see where you're going with it, do an interim check-in, just to see if you're on the right track. And we get here, and we, you know, we we get the final product, we don't get it in term check-in, we don't see any drafts. And if we have problems with it. We get treated like we're the bad guys, like, oh, well, I thought we were gonna approve this tonight, you know, we can put it off for another year, we don't remember the time. And I don't like that, you know, being. Given that ultimatum, that feeling like I'm being backed into a corner. And we do it more and more and more often now, and it's, it's, you know, I want to be as supportive as I can be, but. You know, I spend all weekend digging through spreadsheets and and, you know, fixing problems with spreadsheets and and trying to analyze hundred and twenty-one page. And surveys don't even have a table of contents, and, you know, I have to, you know, we get there on Tuesday night, and we we we're told we have to vote on. How do we do that? How do we do? You know, we had to put off graduation requirements for a month because we had too many questions. We had had just a a inkling of what was going on somewhere in between. I don't mean to sound angry, I'm just, you know, start thinking and talking at the same time, and it comes up. You know, being an introvert can be hard sometimes. But um. You know, it's just, I I just want to know ahead of time what what we're getting. I want to have an opportunity to think about it, analyze it, and get feedback from from our voters. And not be blindsided with something or cornered with it, or feel like I'm being manipulated. Or, you know, that we're being played, or or handled, or anything like that. I want to know. I'm not, I'm not the kind of person who can be handled, I'm very data-driven. I'm very process-driven. And if the process is followed and everybody is is in line, and we we've done it the right way, we follow our democratic principles and. You know, what else can I say? We've done, we've done, but when we feel like we're being. Kind of backed into a corner. Like the process is going on, both team ahead without us. I have. Apologize if this is gonna be frustrating, I'm trying to just be informative with how I'm feeling, so. Please, uh, think that's as constructive as any. Take it.
Um, I believe our superintendent has something.
Yeah, so I think, you know, it it it, you know, I'm hearing a lot here, and uh. And for us, like, you know, the. The the intent is never to to back people in the corner or come in surprised. Things move fast. It's a complicated organization, there's a lot of moving parts. Not a traditional high school. Uh, we try to keep up with everything. Um, we try to provide as many opportunities as we can. We try to, you know, create the next iteration of South Eagan to make our students as competitive as they want to be, the best versions of themselves as they want to be. And it requires us to to be nimble, and and sometimes in our diligence and in our efforts to be nimble and then provide these experiences, we move. People are working, everyone's willing to. But, you know, for me, the graduation change doesn't actually affect until next year's. Class, you know, and, right, so it's it's next year's class. And and so if there's questions about uh the process or 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 feedback, you know, what we can do is we can dig in a little bit more. And and uh. You know, talk to some kids and get some some feedback from from the kids, and so you guys can see how it was this year. Right, and and uh, and I think that that's something that we could, we could do, uh, so you could see how it is being implemented. And then that could be where we're at.
So, yeah, those, those were my, my other comments. Again, Dan, I hear you loud and clear. I think when we take a look at a path forward tonight, I'm assuming you're not asking us to approve this tonight. Because. I think there's a lot to be said for just filtering this through the community, hearing it tonight for kind of like a first read, like we do with our policy. Allowing the six of us to go out and solicit feedback from people that we talk to, what are some of the comments that maybe. Anna or 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 Mike, you can just circulate amongst maybe the student leadership here at the school to sort of solicit their feedback or something else. And then next month, just report back and say, hey, listen. This is uh, this is the, the approach that we did, this is the feedback that we received, we can provide feedback for the folks that we talk to. I do remember talking about this during our summer work session, two years ago. We're gonna be focusing on the JLP, we'll also be focusing on Division One, um, and those are the projects we're working, which I haven't heard since that. Um, so I think that's probably the pain point that that you guys are hearing tonight. But I understand why we're doing what we're doing, just maybe postpone any type of decision-making process. To our next session where we have an opportunity to filter this down.
So Policy IKF has the Junior Learning Project in the policy as a graduation requirement.
So we're gonna need to modify.
So we're gonna have to modify, so we can bring it forward as a policy modification and have this discussion and.
Yeah.
And make it part of that, if that's acceptable, everything.
I would still be interested in hearing the feedback from from the various stakeholders next month, just just sort of.
And we can.
Make sure that. Whether we make a decision based on the feedback is is the question.
Yeah.
There may be, but we have May, we have June, to try to sort of get to where we feel comfortable with. Where, where, what, where it's going, and and it's not to steer anyone on your side of the table to say that it's all of a sudden gonna be ripped up and shredded and completely turned on its head. I wouldn't anticipate that. Um. But because there's a lot of logic. It is. The process. Process, sir. I, and and build upon it. I agree with what you wrote. Like, I think this is a good positive move to to push in the right direction. And I think the easy step would be to just say, yeah, let's adopt it, but then not necessarily the right. Sort of next step, and I think involving everybody to feel a part of the process, especially with the graduation requirements. I I think you guys know me by now, I'm very, very adamant about filtering it through. Whether it be the budget committee, whether it be, you know, the various stakeholders, just so we can go at the end of the day when we vote, and we've taken all those parties and put them.
Alright, one last thing, and then we're gonna move on to the other thing. I would say particular community council. I'm gonna stick by with the, I actually really appreciate all the detail you put in on how we got here, why we got here. Yes, to me, when I read that, I was like, alright, well, this makes sense. I know some of the issues, I I think, uh, and I think one of the things that we. We as a board need to be careful about, and I'm not, it's not a personal, anything anyone said today, because I I I do think. The more we know. Hey, you know, we talked about this two years ago, Lisbon's still working on it, she's working with a group of these people, this, and and maybe we throw in, hey, how about community council or something? Um, I think there's valuable insight we can give, so I'm gonna echo some of that, and some guidance on what we might want to see in the end. I do want us to be wary about the fact, meaning that that doesn't mean we start. Like, our job is not to be, I guess, micromanaging the process over two years either. It is not, it is for us to maybe say, hey, here's some guidance. Include community council, get some feedback from the community, not, we want to be at those meetings with the six people and all that. So I'm, that's more a general comment for everyone as we move forward, because at some point it stops being. Direction and policy and starts becoming, you know, we're just seven more employees. And you don't need seven more hands in the pie. But I do think the point of, you know, like involving community council and a little, and and a wider view on the change is is well said.
Finding that sweet spot. Um.
I have a sweet spot.
And because, I mean, let's be honest, and John, you've had that, um, you know, when I was one seat over, I think, I think you've echoed um that numerous times. Um, and 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 Dan, I appreciate your your caveat on. Um, on uncharacterizing what, without that, it's pretty, pretty harsh language. So I thank you for for caveat on it, because as someone sitting here. Um, devoting an extraordinary amount of time, professional time and personal time to this endeavor, working with extraordinarily dedicated professionals. To, without caveating, that manipulated back into a corner, left out, um, could be um extremely unsettling. Um, but thank you for for caveatting that. But it is a challenge to find a sweet spot working in SAU thirty-nine with four boards and how we do it, and how we manage it, both on personal lives and balance in our life. Um. I will reflect a lot on my ride home tonight, and and about how we establish that balance to involve the board and the correct amount this board versus that board versus this board. And how we manage it in a system. That has been extraordinarily stressed this year. Extraordinarily stressed by personnel. Issues and the the abundance of non-high-leverage activities that Dan and I might go through. Uh, so I I endeavor to um work really hard to find that sweet spot, so these meetings can be uh productive and supportive, and I think you characterize as cheerleading. Um, for versus. Um. Honestly, difficult language, um, but um, thank you for characterizing it and putting it into the perspective, because that helped me. And if my superintendent could kick me on the table and tell me to move on at any time. I just want to follow by.
And that's it.
Well, I just want to follow by what I said. Uh. One of the things that does bother me is how much time goes into this stuff. You know, I. And if we get something that's not quite. What we're looking for, or if that's not complete, I feel like if we just had an opportunity to to check in with you, we could have. You know, said, hey, can we fill that in? Instead, you know, I feel frustrated that, you know. I have time for that conversation. You know, it's, it's just, uh. You know, I I just want to feel like we're giving you every opportunity to to succeed, and I want to be able to to help them. And if we're getting something at the last second, and we're gonna vote on it in two days, I don't have the opportunity to say. You know. This, you know, errors in this spreadsheet that kind of misrepresent what's here, and that's not intentional, I know, and I know, and I know somebody put a ton of work into getting that information in there, and I I feel horrible. Criticizing, or it sounded like I'm criticizing. You know, wrong is wrong, doesn't. You know. I've made mistakes many times, and it's, you know. It's hard when your bonus is based on on your performance, and that's part of it, you know. You know, I had situations where, you know, a third of my salary was my bonus, which was based on how well I budgeted. You know, so if I've had a mistake in my budget spreadsheet. Guess what? My salary was kind of significant in the next year. But I had people above me who wanted me to succeed, and, you know, they were financially incentivized to, too, because their bonuses were based on my. So, but they would check in with me, and we had that opportunity to go back and forth and say, hey, you. You're on the wrong track here, dial us back in, or, hey, I I can't give this to the CEO today unless you you change this, and if I didn't have time to change it, that was, that was a problem. So I don't mean to be, you know, very critical or sound like I'm trying to hurt somebody or express somebody's feelings.
But we'll work through it. I think we'll, I think we'll work through and we'll find a balance.
Alright, I appreciate it, and I can certainly, in my role, I can do a better job in 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 finding that sweet spot, doing that, but. Um, it is difficult. I know Mike tried in his SAU report. To provide a day in the life of administration at SAU thirty-nine. It is, and I've been, this is my thirty-seventh year in public education, my twenty-fifth year in building or district leadership. It is extraordinarily taxing. Emotionally, spiritually. Physically exhausting. And we're talking about today, we are trying to drive this place to improve. We are not trying to cruise this place to function. When we drive this place to improvement, we will miss step, and thank you for this feedback about process. But we are trying to drive the district. Into improvement, that when I arrived three years ago, I could give you significant efficiencies that I haven't seen in a public school in years. And we are charged to drive to improvement, and you picked, you chose with incredible wisdom. The right people around this place to do this work. And I have to say, I admire and I'm privileged to work with these people every day, and they give so much more. Than they absolutely are required or entitled to, and I have to say, because everybody knows I'm on the back now. This is the best, these are the best people doing the best work I've ever seen in my career. And nothing is intentional, and yes, we can find a sweet spot and we will do it, but please know it is extraordinarily difficult. Not just here at South Eagan, Amherst, Mount Vernon, SAU extraordinarily difficult. And it is a privilege to work with these people. And you did an unbelievable job of hiring the right people outside of the seat, the seat of the company, but every other seat. And I'm happy to talk about how hard and how challenging it is to do this work for someone who's actually one of the most experienced district and school leaders in the state right now. Happy to tell you.
Well, we.
And I will not say.
All I'm gonna say is, I I think we appreciate all the hard work, and especially like your clear explanation, information you provided on the JLP. Uh, and we will get there, and we will get there together, and. Yeah. We're gonna look forward to continuing to get, so appreciate the hard work and the explanations and the patience.
Yeah.
I, one question on the different, totally different subject.
Okay, and then, okay.
Report.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, it's a good juxtaposition question, it might help Steve in in your mind as you think about where that, hurting that needle is, so. Um, Section D was the uh summer project. I was, I was.
wondering if you were, and if you weren't, please, I would be very interested to know what you select, what projects were selected, and what projects were not selected, to understand kind of just what that whole uh thing looks like. However, I'm not upset at all that we're, that me as a, that I as a board member was not involved in any of the planning of any of that preparation, of any of the selection process. This is something, mind you, is fully within your wheelhouse. It's not something you'd have to come to the board for approval, and maybe that's the one. Maybe that's where we can start. If there's something that coming to the board for approval, think, aha, let's share the information for sure early in the month. If it's something that's sort of day-to-day operations, yet another year of summer programs, maybe it's it's more information. But it's coming, you said it's in process. Okay, now I'm aware, so now it's like, oh, let me just, how did you select? What what's on the cutting room floor? What's what's approved? Like, what is really of value and what, why, why certain things weren't uh, selected? And I'll probably say, bravo, um, great job, have a great summer, you know? So maybe that's a way to think about how deeply you engage the board members versus conducting your extraordinary hard work that you're dedicated to your task of making us an improved nurse system.
I look forward to doing that.
We haven't selected the projects yet. Yeah, we haven't selected the projects yet, but what we have talked about is, um, so, uh, soliciting information in a way that we haven't done in previous summers, so that we could actually do more than just tell you what projects we selected, but like show you the body of work. So that is planned for, uh, maybe probably September. Um, we'd like to talk about all the things that get done over the summer, um, not just the school-wide career for projects, but the addition.
Very, very much forward here.
You got that. The only thing I'm adding is the senior recycling project. Neat idea, that's being implemented. And it's been a long, long time, a lot of words behind that, so. Me too. Appreciate everybody involved in getting that started. A sports team.
A lot has happened since this was written into a week ago, um, and we're having some really, really exciting seasons. I'm really hoping for some big things uh in June. Our kids are doing really great things.
This is awesome.
Yeah.
We have a lot going on. It's, what was the the term that you used for May?
The marathon.
Marathon May, yep, that would be it. Um, okay, yes, um, facilities report. Thank you, Roger, and all his team, keeping things going. That's awesome. Going into personnel discussion.
Yeah, um, there's three, there's three parts to personnel tonight. Two of them, we'll we'll kind of talk a little bit more in a non-public. About, um, first, I would like the the board to accept the resignation of a longtime paraprofessional. Typically, we don't have to bring the the paraprofessional resignations to to the board, but I want, I want the board to recognize Dave McGrath. Years of service, he's been here quite some times since the early two thousands. Yeah, and so, uh, he is retiring at the end of the year. And, uh, so I was hoping the board would just, you know, accept his, uh, his resignation, the retirement.
All right, so we need a motion on that. Yeah, and I buy the motion to accept with regret the resignation of Dave McGrath.
So.
Move by, we'll say Mr. O'Keefe and second him by.
Sure, second.
Mr. Glover. Do we need actually go down? No, no, just, okay, thank you.
So then the next thing we're gonna be nominating a a science teacher this evening. Uh, gentleman's name is Eric Perry. Uh, he comes from Hollis Brookline. His resume is attached in Trello. So you can take a look at that. Uh, we we can talk a little bit more on on public about that if you'd like, and then the third piece is we're gonna be, and we have four administrators at South Eagan High School that we need to uh, administer new contracts to, and and I would like to talk about that in non-public a little bit later. So that is the personnel for this this evening.
Okay.
Uh, two for non-public will come back out and, uh, we'll go from there. Thank you.
All right, so we'll do that at the end. Subcommittee updates, is there any subcommittee update? We did two weeks ago.
I know, I didn't know very, haven't very much to say.
Wellness, wellness, yeah, wellness. We met yesterday for one of the most effective meetings in history, in my experience. So, um, Steve presented the overwhelming unanimous, enthusiastic support by all the committee members who were there, Wellness Week, to be implemented on, we could make it. Whereby Monday, there will be a survey given, um, survey questions. We didn't really talk about the survey questions, but, um.
Oh, wellness related, all the wellness.
Wellness, I mean, we had talked about, are those the ones we talked about previously?
Yeah.
To, the point of the survey is to solicit topics of interest for future wellness events, so community surveys, students, faculty and staff, um, the state, official state of the group, but wanted to also include the community to see, to see how um, we could spread wellness concept both of our towns. Tuesday, mindful minute, or maybe, as the case may be, mindful minute thirty-nine seconds. Out of respect for our SAU thirty-nine moniker. Uh, Wednesday, uh, walking verbally without headphones.
Yep.
To feel something different maybe than what your normal is.
You got it, to great notes. Yes.
Yeah, mindful. Uh, Thursday is the drinking extra water, Thursday, Thursday. And then Friday is, um, do, uh, sample some healthy foods, um, that will be served at the, here.
Free, and recipes will be available.
And that's SAU wide.
Food being prepared by our own chef?
Yes.
Fight, the better.
And, um, the idea for the Tuesday mindful minute is to have the whole SEU do it at some time. Same time, sometime between nine AM and ten AM, so that everybody's sort of engaged at the same moment in that. And to, uh, promote that, Crystal was going to send out a flyer, and somebody suggested to, uh, create approval to maybe create a hashtag that could be, then gets, I could pull it out, and it could light up on kid network, sorry, student network. Um, so we can get a bunch of participation as feasible. And appreciate. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other? I mean, I know it's, it hasn't been long, so we'll revisit that. I know, that's why I'm like, hey.
I'll just say one more thing about. I don't think you before, but just to run. The wellness isn't just these five things on, that's like the maybe the lowest range, most traditional group, it's very implementable, very achievable, it's it's not a huge commitment, it's a start. But the wellness ideas that we've bandied about are everything from guns, firearm safety, to, um, maybe these traditional things about nutrition, but the blue light from the phones and social media time, and and dinner, you know, with real, meeting real people, and so, well, we're taking, taking this very extremely broad view of what wellness can mean for anybody, so board members or anybody in the community receives the survey, feel free to add to that concept of wellness and what that might mean for you, and how the community might, you might be able to serve the community in that way.
Thank you. Fantastic. Thanks for all that work. The general assurances, so in the packet is the general assurance letter. I don't know if everyone had a chance to read through the twenty pages or whatever it is with excitement. Any questions, I, because I actually have one. Number eighteen on there. Personnel funded from federal grants and some factor, subcontractors will adhere to provision from text messaging while driving an organizational vehicle or while driving their own privately owned, so I get that, and I'm a hundred percent behind that. How do we implement, I mean, how? How do we stop it? How do we, I mean, I'm, we're assuming it's that what happens when someone does an acquisition act, what does that mean to our grants or grants go away?
If we paid a driver out of federal funds, we may have to oversee, but we don't.
So any of our transition students are not paid out of, there's no parent driving a van that's paid out of?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay. Good to know.
That's a great question.
That's where that was going.
And if, like, we are talking about having transportation for our title, but it was these school buses, and the school buses are obviously limited.
Yes.
Also using.
Yeah.
But great, thank you.
So other than that, what I think we need to get approval, do we decide it? No, I just sign.
Yeah, we do, we need to.
Yeah, to sign the.
General.
General. Discussion just, this is the same blueprint as every year's annual thing you do, right? So this is not new or different from in business.
And what happened last year, just for transparency, we brought the program assurances, which did need board approvals, we had to come back with general.
Yeah.
So this year, we did the order right, I threw program in there just because you saw it last year. Next year, we can just do general.
Okay, so any other discussion? Now we'll do a roll call vote. Sunny? Still have her?
Daniels, yes.
Okay.
It'll keep you this.
Whoever, yes, baby, yes.
All right, we'll go find the sign. Something I'll get from Chelsea. Um, the next one, the board discussion, review of tuition student status, is that a non-public more, or is it something?
It 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 can be, they're specific questions, but, you know, in the board notes, we indicated we had three students that who are tuitioned in, we'd like to remain, you know, have them remain at 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 South Eagan High School. Um, we are asking the board to accept a freshman student who's currently at AMS, it's in good standing at AMS. Um, and we'd like to accept that student, you know, uh, into South Eagan High School. Uh, and if there's any specific questions, when we go into non-public, you know, we'll, we'll absolutely ask.
Okay, currently tuitioned into AMS.
In good standing.
And and it's wearing, we'll go up first.
June board schedule, so I know there were dates, I sent out something because Chelsea had sent out to me.
I made a mistake.
Yeah, so the third, so ignore the thirteenth one that was sent to.
That's Mount Vernon's graduation. You see, that was originally Mount Vernon's board meeting, and when they canceled the board meeting, we thought we could move this meeting from the eleven to the thirteen, but I can't. Be there, right? And so I was hoping we could go to the six, if people had that available of June. Um, and if we don't get a decision say, because people have to look at calendars, that's okay, but I just, we wanted to throw it out there as we reorganize.
We have eleven. Well, well, it's, it's moved around.
Yeah.
Always the first, first.
So June, we doubled it up.
Yes.
Well, I already had on the sixth, so I.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, that happened, was it last year, June?
Yes, SAU.
Yeah, yeah.
And swear in everybody and get a note read from there.
Yeah, yeah. It's hilarious.
June sixth is perfect, because on the fifth is another wellness meeting, so we'll have a fresh.
Look, we did briefing our mindful minute.
So we're good.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, everybody. So someone will take it off, I, it's on my calendar on the eleventh.
Yeah, we'll move officially with Chelsea.
But if you want to just move out of that.
By the way, love you guys do that. Just sending it out, and it just magically appears or disappears. It's fantastic.
Tell me good, yes.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Um, so next I'll listen to the board goals, and I had sent out a just a word document that threw out, oh, ideas, I kind of organized everyone's comments into, look, I was looking at the framework of practice, kind of like we talked about the SAU, saying, if we're gonna make meaningful goals, let's make sure it also fits with what is being driven for the school. I mean, yes, we are part of that drive, but I wanna see, are we talking about the same things as what the superintendent's interested in, or are there things that fall outside of it? How do we frame it? Um, so you can see how things kind of fell in. Um, I didn't know if there were any other thoughts or things to add, or can we talk about actually writing goals? Because this isn't the goals, this is to me, the things that we threw out are ideas, those things we wanna consider. Right? So we wanna frame the goal, might say, hey, this is really a measurable item. Review budgets, like.
Goals are not action items.
Correct, so we wanna separate those two, but we say the action item might fall underneath one of the goals that we end up writing in, because it's a broad vision. That makes sense to people. Um, so is there any, is there something else that wanted to be considered? Because I have some ideas on three of them, but.
Did have a a couple of maybe something to add. Um, one is once, I'm trying to think of ways that we can get to know our seventh and eighth grade students before they enter high school. Idea that's been bandied about is to other idea that I thought of and thinking about that is, is there a way to establish some kind of professional development or ability to to share information about students between seventh, eighth, and ninth grade staff? Now, I don't know if that's even possible, because they're in different labor. Don't know if they can agree to work together. I don't know how you would implement that. If there was a way to not just the step-up days, that's, they're very rigorous, okay, I I it's all that, many bullet points, there's a lot of effort done to transition them. Same for the Mount Vernon students coming into, uh, into AMS. I've I've seen the list, they're very impressive. But I'm talking something more systemic, something more routine. Uh, I don't know what that would look like, so I'm sort of throwing it out there as something to maybe, uh, consider if that's feasibility of that, ability of that view of that uh, as as a way to know who's coming, to be able to share best practices and all of that lovely stuff. So that was one.
So you're talking about redoing the transition from eighth grade to SHS, and then that's just the broad, that's the broad.
Into the high school, people understanding the teenagers are coming. Certainly is, but again, I don't know how that works in the existing brand. Maybe that's something that could be talked about more deeply.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, sorry, no, that's all right. Thank you. Are there, are there any other thoughts? Yes, no.
So one was, and this is more even maybe universal, which is you know, what are the metrics and data wrapped around these goals, whatever we settle on? And I'm wondering if, I'm hearing from computer science teacher, by the way, thank you for bringing more teachers into our meetings. I really, really appreciate that. You know, about the power of Python and the advanced courses to do data analytics. I know we've heard from Dana before, there's data science coursework. We talked about this previously, so is there a way for students to get involved in helping us develop metrics and get the longitudinal data, snap the baselines for other goals that we could maybe look as far back as we can. If we can't start now, it builds a baseline so we can measure ourselves forward. I mean, you know what Rolf did, re-senior project last year, and going back to the archives, digitizing stuff, I mean, I don't know if there's data in there that's relevant here for that type of student engagement, to help us understand what we're trying to understand. Not burden the administration with additional tasks, but leverage other tools in the toolbox perhaps to gather data, figure out what data and help us handle. That's what I wanted to add to this.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, what I'd like to do is I think to to make this work, so we're not here online necessarily, there were, I I was hoping for like three sorts of topics you wanna put those goals around, and then maybe outfits, myself, Kristi, Anna can sit down, draft, like draft the goal, bring them forward for the next meeting, for one of those, we can word smith them offline versus we're trying. Draft the goal, bring them forward for the next meeting, for one of those, we can wordsmith them offline versus we're trying wordsmith something here. Um, but. The three, the three things I saw that kept standing out was. Um, you know, talking about the instructional time, it seems to be a piece that we keep talking about, you know, what. So I was looking at supporting continual improvement instructional practices and programming. And that includes supporting the math literacy work, reviewing the budget, make sure everything we do in the budget supports that sort of work. Um, support the learners through through whatever program is given, including high achievers, C T E others. So it kind of falls in that same umbrella and figure out some metrics underneath that and say, what is what we're looking at? So that's one area I was looking at. Um, the second area, of course, uh, review updating our communications regarding our school. Philosophy, vision, you know, look around the strategic plan, create communication process, something that involves. Making sure we understand who we are, make sure we're all on the same page, because I think it will help. All of us discuss where you're going and changes that you're making, um, if we're all on the same page, because I think not necessarily. Be good to have that communication of those things. And then the third one, of course, is, you know, with with regards to our facilities, is just make sure they're up to date, let's look at those, you know, so includes the science labs. Includes, you know, something was bringing up review of soar, uh, making sure that our facilities support all of our programming in an appropriate way, make sure it's. Using with an efficient way, so kind of looking at those three broad areas, I don't have to wordsmith on them. But I was looking at those as maybe three sort of priorities, because it kind of encompasses a lot of this, but then there. Because then I think under that communication, it also includes building and strengthening partnerships, so that's why I don't have the wordsmithing, but I think it needs to include. So what we could do for next time is try to. Try to take what we have so far, put it under those kind of three umbrella topics, do the wordsmithing. But then at that time also figure out, is there something that was on this list that doesn't really fit there? And needs to be discussed further on, do we remove it altogether, or do we change it, or is it additional?
Well, some of the things like I know, Mr. Glover brought up was like amend the constitution, to me, that's a, something that belongs on an agenda, not necessarily a goal. So I would rather like to make sure it gets added to an agenda as a discussion topic.
I just put it back on that one, because I, I, to me, that ends up in build the strength of partnerships. And as, you know, evidence of that, here's just an article two sets out board duties. They include, I highlighted it, the determination and periodic review of educational goals and short term. Short term objectives for the high school in consultation with students, faculty, staff, administration and community. Seek systematic communications between the board and students, faculty, staff, communities. Communicate to other board members, the superintendent and the principal, keep informed about current current educational issues by individual staff. So, me, like, that's the partnership, with the, pursuant to the conversation we had, we figured how how we. Share information and work together to solve the problems together, to me, that's building strengthening partnerships. And and so maybe this, maybe getting that piece done is. Is an agenda item.
Yeah, because it'll fall under a measurable piece of a goal, right?
Well, that'd be easy to measure.
That's why I'm like, I think that can be a topic, but it's not going to be an overall goal, but I think it'll fall as part of the communication piece, right?
To me, it's about, it's about. It's about strengthening the partnerships and and the board's role in the partnership. Model of, it's a vegan culture of all the stakeholders get it. We are essentially the community representatives.
And, yeah, and then again, I I I, for me, I look at the the candidate statements as an agenda. I don't think it's a goal necessarily, I look at it as an agenda topic to discuss.
As long as it's. Without discussion.
So, I guess that's part of why I'm saying that, as we format the goals. If there's something that doesn't seem to fit under, instead of just. Puts them aside and the disappearing of the next meeting, we say, here are the goals, here's what we kind of see under that. Here's a couple of things we didn't know, does it fit within one of these goals? Does it need to just be a separate agenda item? Or do we need to talk about it and make a fourth goal? But but once we've kind of gone through it. And kind of consolidated everything in their different silos, we can then make that decision in a more fractal way. Thoughtful way. So, is everyone okay if we kind of go with those three broad areas and we're going to wordsmith and we'll get it out?
I know we always amend it, I mean.
Sunny, let me check in with you, I haven't, alright, does that make sense to you? Is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, it all makes sense to me, thank you.
Thanks.
So, just in that sense, you are combined, I mean, just looking at the frame. Think Mike's framework is reasonable.
It's Mike's framework, but we're trying to see those things we're interested in talking about all underneath.
Okay, sorry, I was gonna say, I'm looking at.
Right, and you combine the first two and improve literacy.
Yes.
Number two, you know. The use, improve the use of instructional time, and there's also support the continual. Maybe those can be sort of going in our.
It falls under, I'm looking under communication regarding our school vision, philosophy, strategic, to make sure that we're on the same page, we're working together as well. And it's going to include communication and developing, um, building, strengthening partnerships, because that's all part of, I, I'm looking at all falling under there. So I, let's wordsmith it and maybe it'll make.
Yeah, we have time, you started early. You're in good spot, the second time you talked about it in early May.
Yeah, and I think in June we'll we'll have some things written out, we'll get to you, so you have time to. Think over you. Okay.
And then, I mean, are, is there a, I guess, to do retreats this year?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we are. I'm gonna talk about them in superintendent's.
So, okay, sorry.
Thank you. Speaking of which, yes, is the next thing?
Yes, so, um, a couple of things, yeah, you, uh, that I wanted to just add. If we prepare for the end of the year, then we bring prepared for the summer, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna be taking a hard look in our, our, the rhythm of our. Our summer, our rhythm into the fall around meetings, retreats, uh, budget meetings, uh, the budget process. You know, and so, uh, that's something that we're gonna be working on, you know, throughout the month of May, there is going to be, uh, some, some emails sent out with. You know, time to try to get some retreats, you know, in, uh, we we're gonna commit to at least one retreat for each board in July. Um, and you're just gonna, you know, work towards that, the the other pieces. Um, you know, you, as you guys ref- referenced the framework, framework, we're gonna lean lean in very heavily to that, as you see. Uh, goals from the superintendent, goals from the building, and how they're actionized to. You know, achieve some of, some of the work in the framework. Um, you're gonna see us have a concerted effort to. Try to make the 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 work sustainable, um, and and productive. For teachers, students and families and building admin in in S A U, that's gonna, that's a constant goal for us, because. You know, it's an interesting piece, like being in in Amherst and in Mount Vernon, we have really good schools. We have really good schools. And sometimes I sit in meetings throughout the week and you you wouldn't think that we have really good schools. And I I want to go back to a lot of our problems that we have, and I was talking about this at another board meeting, um. They're very refined, they're very nuanced, they're complicated. You know, and and so I always wanted this, as we kind of look at that, is to make sure that we are identifying the right areas to focus. So I go back to the framework that I think those topics, with the exception of maybe instructional time. Are topics that high functioning schools should always be working towards. Instructional practices, improving literacy in math, make sure your facilities are up to date and having strong partnerships. So you're gonna continue to see us lean into that with our work, because I don't, you know, think that if it's two thousand twenty four, two thousand thirty four. Those topics in public school are still going to be relevant. And for me, you know, and I said this, you know, sometimes and 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 people to my right say, hey, you might not want to say that. But for me, my. My time as a building administrator focused really on leaning into those and not chasing new initiatives. Because I never thought those were high, high leverage. But when you had the foundation of those things going well, then you could lean into schools within a school, steam academies. Or 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 things like that, or enhancing your E L O, but you're gonna see us really lean into. The work there, and I just wanted to to let people know how, where we're at, so they know what to expect. When it's coming out in June and July and into next year, and uh, and we can continue to talk about it, we're gonna see more language. Around that, as we, as we talk, as we have retreats, and we use data and and plan the budget and the calendar, so. That's kind of my update for you guys for this evening, uh, as we segue.
So, yeah, I I love the framework, I really really do, and I think going forward, if I could. One thing, maybe, you know, Chelsea consistently put that onto our agenda down at the bottom. So it's front of mind, it's sort of like a goal or mission statement, every single agenda that we do, here's the framework, I'm gonna call the framework for success. And the reason why that's there is because it's gonna really be the guiding sort of principle of what you're going to do. Uh, over the course of the subsequent year, and when that's front of mind, it's not only for us, the community sees it upfront. And if we ever have somebody in the community say, hey, what's the framework of success? We can say, look at our monthly agenda, it's listed literally on every single one at the bottom. And I think that's just a really good spot to start to really solidify the importance of A six guidance.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
And you 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 changed it. I, I didn't realize that, so I I I pulled it up in the. One that's on the website. And then I was like, wait, this goal six was just improved facilities, but you changed it, say, to reflect the values of our community at some point. Uh, presuming that was intentional, those words didn't just hear in the. Yes, and I liked the ad, the ad, and they actually mentioned it the other night. Uh, because, you know, that's, it's a lot of money for. Peace, so taking the best of my use of our facilities that we have, and you be being consistent with your work.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
And could I just say also, as since you mentioned retreat. And this idea of building and strengthening partnerships. And this notion of sharing information early and off, or particularly if there's something that's going to need a board approval. As I I just would encourage you to to think about how you could include us as an, giving us an opportunity to give you feedback. On your budgeting process before we see for the first time draft one in late September. I'm not saying we need to see a bunch of spreadsheets or a bunch of anything before that, but what are the, what are the. What focus focal points for investment? What do we as individual board members have concepts of that? You know, I brought up one about. I did maybe something, some kind of investment and shooting students back at this. What is it about that? Maybe other people have other, if you could share your ideas with us before we see, before your process is complete. Maybe that's a way we can, we can purpose our partner a little bit better and give some feedback. To you as individual members that you can consider and then just. There's that, that then we've got an exchange going on, seeing the scoreboard type things, it'd be really exciting for me as a member. To be, to have an opportunity to contribute. And, um, maybe help produce a budget that, um, first budget that is, um. Getting the marks.
Now, and I think you're gonna hear us talk a little bit about budget drivers, you're gonna hear us talk a little bit about budget goals, a little bit, so. So, appreciate it, yeah, we're working.
So, one thing I know is not on the agenda, we could talk about the S A U meeting, one of those really quick turn. Today, basically, you had a few things happen. Uh, in my life, including my kids' campus having. Drag kids, sorry. Um, but I know we do, as a board, we probably want to discuss where we are, I don't. It's not on the agenda, I don't know if we can bring about things that we want to explore, or we need answers from administrative.
So what I was hoping you guys could do, it was, we had created this agenda before the S A U meeting, and so was I, I was hoping. Uh, because on May twenty third, we're discussing starting end times again, um, and I don't think we need to, but we're going to. Uh, start discussing on May twenty third, but I think what you guys should do is have any questions that you want. Us to look into. If you can send them to Stephanie, right, and and you just need some more time to think about it, you know, because that meeting was Tuesday. We all came in very tired on Wednesday, you have enough time, so if you can send like the topics and areas to to Stephanie. And and then maybe we can formulate that into something that you guys could be prepared to have a discussion with on May twenty third. That was my thought process.
By the way, I I think that like it, because it was for time, and by the way, I. I wasn't upset the timing of that, that survey, it only closed like two weeks prior, so it must have been a crush.
And well, he was on vacation for.
Yeah, and it was a vacation week, so.
Yes.
I looked at that, that's okay. Wow, it's gonna take some time to process. Appreciate you giving us that, but I think that's been squarely in our agenda because. Because that's, you know, expanding it and improve the use of structure. Start time issue affects instructional time, so I think it's not perfectly okay for us to talk about it. And maybe not at nauseam tonight, but it is within the framework. Or, I'm certain it's open season. We don't have to be afraid of it not being on the agendas.
Yeah, I think if there if there's things to be explored, definitely send me that, I mean, I, the hot topics. There, I think we need to have it on our agenda though, separate from the twenty third, as a longer. And our next thing's on you, so, right, yeah, but we do.
My teamwork the other night, I didn't realize it was coming back up on the twenty third, because I thought we basically said we're not.
So for me, I don't think, I don't know why, we're talking about it on the twenty third necessarily, you know, and. We're not doing anything in the twenty four, twenty five school year, but I do think they. You know, I think the way Christie was, you know, organizing, like if you have topics you wanted to look into. Moving forward, like over the summer, as as we've talked about it later, maybe you can bring those to the twenty third meeting. Yeah, because nothing's changing for twenty four, twenty five, and so I think that's where we're at, and and that's why I think if you send them to Stephanie. And and then we we can, she can organize and send them back out to you guys, and then you can come prepared to say, hey. We want these topics, look into closer as we talk more about starting end times at a later date. Because we're not doing anything different for twenty four, twenty five.
Yeah, yeah, and I think we should have an agenda, and maybe that actually like retreat where we discuss it. At some length, of what are the options?
Yes, yes.
What are the things we can do, if we get back? The instructional time that was lost.
I want like their curriculums are fully taught, that we, that teachers are comfortably able to do it, that you have to be explored, like I want buses there on park. We shouldn't have any buses showing up late.
Because there's all these different questions, right? Talk about it, it's its own like.
And we can put it on June sixth, so if you guys want to dig in a little bit more, we can put it on. August meeting, you know, we can always put it on more meetings, yeah.
Could I just add that?
Yeah.
I was thinking about this after Tuesday, and I thought, wow, this. Not start time per se, but frame, within the framework, instructional time piece, we we took a big hunk out of. With our labor agreements, okay, that's sort of done for the next three years or so. So what else can we do? And the start time question really raises. Maybe there's other things we can do besides just completely hurt at the start time to capture more instruction. That affects all three districts, so perhaps. That issue of how do we leverage the most structural time within our districts really could be a committee of the of S A U represented by. Work members from each board, community members from each town. Um, to wrestle and grapple with, carry some of that water, so the administration isn't constantly burdened with this. Uh, to look into some alternatives, raise these questions, bring their findings. Not their decisions, okay, the community might not make any decision, but bring their findings, bring their rationale, bring their information to board meetings. So that we can then grapple with them. Um, you know, if you're thinking the busing to whatever we do with clubs at the high school. You know, if you're thinking the busing to, what are we with clubs at the high school? Do we, do we defeat the purpose if we open up before school activities? Is that even a reasonable thing to do under the science, who are the science? Prefer the delay athletics, what is the true impact of, of this early dismissals on athletes? Can we rearrange the master schedule so that you're more electives at the end of the day instead of four, four club courses? And everything in between, all of the ideas universal start time, that committee could really grapple with. And that work can continue without bothering the administration, without us, I mean, sitting here just by ourselves going, gee, I don't.
I think it needs to be a combination of those two things, because, I mean, us and maybe a greater committee of the SAU, because some of it is unique to us. And, you know, Mont Vernon's reps on this committee, I'm looking at you not only because you're from Mont Vernon, obviously. Mont Vernon reps the committee, like, I mean, they're, they're all with the elementary school right now through sixth grade. So like what we just, what, what, what are our options with our master schedule, how does that impact us? There's not, you know, there's like no overlap there. Whereas Amherst, maybe some folks from middle school are struggling with the same sport, sport issues, activities, do things happen before? So it's almost like a I mean, there's stuff that we need to figure out ourselves that are just going to impact us, you know, the master schedule issues, right? You know, but then there's other things that I think a grant, a larger committee can be very helpful. And by ourselves, that doesn't necessarily mean necessarily just us, I mean, maybe that becomes a committee of some folks from, you know, maybe council input. You know, a, a variety of different stakeholders could be involved in that. But I think there are things that we need to figure out as far as, you know, priorities getting back time, are the priorities sports thing? I mean, I, I think somehow it has to be getting back time. And I think, you know, how do you get engagements? I mean, maybe that does become some of the things before school starts. And yeah, it defeats the purpose a little bit, but it also is people put out as voluntary. You've got kids who want to be engaged in something, and they look at the hockey kids, right? Doesn't they get up at like four in the morning or something?
No, no.
No, boy.
You practice for four in the afternoon.
Or the afternoon, okay. So, well, my husband played hockey back in the day, and if it only get rain time at like five in the morning. So, you know, the, the people who do that choose, choose to do that and.
Well, you know, I, I know, maybe it could be both, and I, I read these monsters, like I mean, who's going to call the other districts who have, have later start? Who, who had similar dismissals of us to figure out what their. Honestly, I'd rather a committee members do it and not Mike and Steve and Amy and Dana and their team. I've heard of them, focused on some other things, so they're not overburdened, right?
But again, if you're from Vernon and you want to keep the early start time, it's working great for your, you know, your kids for the sixth grade, fifth grade and.
Sixth grade?
Sixth grade. I mean, you know, there, there are some of the things that I guess I'm just saying don't necessarily cover everyone. You know, you need to then bring the information back to, to them and say, these are the things we learned, this is what we did.
I was going to suggest that, that's one thing we don't, we understand. Don't really do the ad hoc committees to help study the graduation requirements. And I know Mike and Steve are probably looking at each other going, we don't need them around. But, you know, it helps with buying it.
I think this is a big one, it's cross district, so I think let's start at least and collect what our ideas and hard things are. Let's see what happens at the SAU meeting, well, we can put this on our agenda and decide.
That was something I was going to bring to that SAU meeting was this idea of a SAU generated committee to grapple with this as a unit. Some of, to put Anna's point, some, some portion of that as a unit is more high school specific. But everyone understanding about how the solutions are writ large, it gives value to that. So I would want, wouldn't want to rip certain tasks away from that committee. And hopefully it would be well, well, not attended, but, but supplied with people and community ability to be interested in it. Helping us with the answers and moving the data that. So yes, some of it's affects different people differently.
So what you sent to me, focus on so he can, what, what information do you need to better, to make a better decision? Than that to me.
The long term, the big one's going to be unified, like unified. So, but that, you know, we gotta, we gotta.
And the duty of my, and this may be satisfied Tara, who gave her, 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 maybe she'll listen to me.
She does.
Is that this, this discussion will continue.
Yes.
And we have at, at least a year to to think about how we can, and maybe it's not about the start time, really, maybe it's about.
And I, and I just want to address the, the public comment that Tara made is that I think because we had recently received the data, it was a lot consumed, it wasn't just, you know, few statistics, or you're like, oh, there's an easy decision, and knowing that there's two other districts trying to wrestle with this as well, and it's not an easy answer that it was at least a start to hear what people had to say. And because we are already in May to say, we're going to make a, unless it was an easy decision to say, move it back. There was no way a decision was going to be made a couple of months ago, just because the quantity of data. And we need to make sure we have a good enriching conversation about decision that is right for the entire SAU. That's why we weren't, we didn't get into too many details, because there was already a lot on the agenda.
Entire SAU has never.
Right. Okay. So I'm going to move on that topic and we don't, we don't have anybody here in public, is there anyone else off online?
Yes, we have some people online.
If there is anyone online who would like to speak, please raise your hand, probably comments.
No hands raised at the moment.
Give them just a moment to find the button. I don't see any hands going up. And under R S A ninety-one, eight, three, two, C.
Second.
All right, move second, roll call vote, Sunny.
Daniels, yes.
Glover, yes, C.
You, wait, did you say A or C?
C.
Just C.
We have reputation.